Alright, so I'm recording. Alright guys, so this is Sunday Power, uh, Zoom Power Hour and we have with us the amazing and most beloved, you know, Ambassador Diamond, Melody McFarden. So I'm so glad to have seen you over also in convention to spend some time with you, to be able to connect more with you and I, I just pray that this is not the one-time Zoom that we're gonna do. We're gonna be doing more and more and more. And you're gonna pour onto us and you're gonna give us all your knowledge and, um, you know, I know that this group, it's starting slowly but surely, um, but we're here and we're like, you know, we're a power group and we're here to work and we're here to do the best that we can and we're just kicking butts and taking names, you know?
Yeah.
We're so glad to have you here. I'm so glad that you're able to take that time off and be able to help us with us, with everything, um, and take it away.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me, Erica. You know, um, you guys have had a little bit of adversity. You know, you've had, had some rough patches, but you know what? You guys are still here.
Yes.
And that is huge. To me, that's a huge success. And so, uh, I just wanna say first and foremost that I am so proud of y'all for hanging in there, for not quitting when everything seemed to be stacked up against you, uh, when your, your, your leaders left, um, and, but you know what? You became the leader.
Yes.
You became the leader. So, um, you know, I'm here to support you. You guys need to know that, um, any of you can have direct access to me. Erica has direct access to me. So I'm here for you. Please don't hesitate to reach out, ever. Don't ever hesitate because I am what's left in your upline. Everything else is, is for all practical purposes, gone. So, um, you know, so I have an interest in what you guys are doing. I care about you and I want you to know that I'm here for you. Okay? So before we get anything else started, I just wanted to say that you guys are special and you're not alone and you haven't been forgotten and you are, uh, very much near and dear to my heart. So, um, you know, we just, we just need to see more of y'all. We need to see you guys coming on up now. I think that maybe some of the, the dust has settled a little bit from, you know, last year. It was, was a very tough year. A lot of changes going on, a lot of people leaving and everything, but the good ones are still here.
We're strong.
And so, yes, you're strong and, you know, you're not giving up and you're not quitting and that speaks volumes to me. Speaks volumes. Okay? So, some of the things that I wanted to share with you, I know that Erica, you know, gave me a list of things that, that she felt like she wanted me to cover. And one of them is why it works. You know, my husband and I, um, had been in network marketing for 15 years prior to us joining It Works. And, you know, we got a good idea of what other network marketing companies are like. You know, what their, um, what their motives are, what their culture is, what their, uh, the way that they treat their distributors. We learned 15 years' worth of that. And at the end of 15 years, we still had not arrived in our network marketing, uh, success, career success. And we had given up on network marketing. We thought, you know what? It's a great concept. It's a great idea, but good Lord, we can't find a, a, you know, a good company. We can't find the right kind of products. Uh, we couldn't find the right kind of compensation plan. I mean, each one that we joined, it sounded good. It looked good. But when we got into it, you know, we realized, wow, there's a lot of flaws here. And I will say, there's not a perfect company. Don't, don't begin to think that there's anything out there that is a hundred percent perfect. There's no such thing. But when you compare and you line up, it works against a lot of other network marketing companies. We, I, in my personal opinion and what I have studied, we win every time. So, you know, why it works? It works as an established company. It Works has a, an amazing pay plan. It also has, uh, a CEO and his wife who truly care about us, who have integrity. Because there are some companies out there that their CEO has zero integrity. And they're doing things, luring quality people away from other network marketing companies and paying them and giving them a master recruiter position and putting them, putting them at the top of their pay plan where these people didn't earn it. And that's wrong. That is shady. That is not integrity. And so, we don't have that. There are companies out there that every time it looks like a lot of people are fixing to make some money, they change the marketing plan. You know, they are always tweaking the marketing plan where they're taking money away from you. It Works never takes money away from us. I mean, and, and I got involved with It Works in June of 2005 and they have added more money to the pay plan since I got started. And we are always being, um, challenged by our CEO and given bonuses upon bonuses. You know, last year, they gave a million dollars away to distributors. A hundred distributors got $10,000 each. All they had to do was get one customer, one distributor. That's it. That's it, to get into a drawing. He did that the year before, or was it the year before that? I don't know. But he gave away 20, $20,000 giveaways and all they had to do was one distributor, one loyal customer. And he did that on three separate occasions. So he gave 60 people $20,000 each. And then just recently at our, um, one conference, he gave away dream cash anywhere from $10,000 up to $50,000. And what did they have to do? They got, what, two distributors? Two distributors. Got you in that drawing. And, you know, our CEO is constantly doing that. Um, he gave us good bonuses back in, uh, January of 2012 is when we got the first good bonuses. And those are bonuses for doing what you wanna do anyway to take advantage of the pay plan. I feel like I gotta sneeze. Oh my goodness. But, um, you know, so he's been giving good bonuses every year since then for people who are achieving what they should be achieving anyway to build the business. It's just an extra bonus on top. And this year, I love what he's doing this year, that he's giving us time to build these bonuses and a reasonable timeframe so that once you hit it, you maintain it. And that's, that's very strong for our company. So why it works? We have great products at a great price with a great marketing plan and the right people in place with our corporation, with our company in Mark and Cindy Pentecost, with Luis Maharras, with Dr. Don Verholt, with Pam Souter, Mike Patello. These people have integrity. And I have never, ever, one time, questioned Mark and Cindy's integrity, ever. They have impeccable integrity. And so, that's why it works. That's why I love it. And that's why you should really look at it as, um, a very viable opportunity. United and together as a team. Alright, that is so important. We are better together. You know, we have seen through social media that where people split off from their main team and go and do their own thing. And, and, and on the one hand, I can understand that because they are, um, wanting to lead. And, and you want people like that. You want people who are leading. But you don't want to take them away from the, from the, from the mother, so to speak. Okay, so, um, for instance, you guys should all be on Pioneers United, that page, Pioneers. That page came as a result of several of my Presidentials and Triple Diamonds who had broken off and doing their own thing and they were doing okay, doing their own pages and doing, you know, leading their own teams. But what ends up happening is, is that the team gets tired of hearing from one person. And so, it's okay to have your own team page to where you have connection to your team. But to take them entirely away from the main team page is not a good move because then we become divided. And the team is what struggles. And so, these leaders all said, "Oh my goodness, we need to be together." And so, on the Pioneers page, everybody there is, it's their page. It's not my page. It's everybody's page. Because we are better together and we are better when we're united together. Doesn't mean we can't do some things separately. Doesn't mean that we don't have, you know, like, like this with Erica. This is very much needed for Erica to have, you know, her own, you know, little space here. But she's not taking you away from the main source. And so, you know, it's very, very important that you stay united, that you stay together. Um, you know, it, it, it's good to hear from other leaders. And I can promise you, the leaders that are on Pioneers United are all people that have been in the business for a while. And they know how to build, but they also know how to build with integrity. And they are people that I trust, so therefore you can trust them. Okay? So that's number two. Number three, how would you transition from working one, um, let's see, it got, it got, uh,
Level Marketing.
One company to an, uh, to another. How would you transition from working from one company to another? And she said, "I know you experienced immolations from different companies and how to go about introducing networks to your friends and family." So when you, so you've just left another company and you're just coming to It Works. It's a little bit different if you are a jumper from one company to the next company, to the next company, to the next company. And after a while, your friends and family just kinda go, "Yeah, there she goes again." You know, and that, every time you jump from one business to another, you end up losing a little bit of credibility, a little more credibility and a little more. But, the thing is, if you find the right company, then you stick with it, through thick, through thin. And what you can say is, "I know you've watched my journey. I know that you have seen me go from one company to the next because I've been in search of the right company with the right products, at the right time, with the right leadership. And I truly believe I have found it now. And all along, I'm so thankful for the other things that I learned in those other companies because now I can use that where I am today." So, you acknowledge it right out the gate. "I know you've seen me. You jumped, you've seen me go from one to the next, the next because I've been searching." So you turn that to a positive. You say, "I've been looking for the right thing." And so, um, you can do that. When people see that you are serious and that you're not just jumping out of this into another one, then after a while, they're watching you and then after a while, they are going to come on board with you. If you can show them that this time, you are serious and this time, you have found what you were looking for. Okay? Alright. How important is it to get to an It Works event? Oh my goodness. It is one of the most important things that you can do because what you learn there, I mean, what you see, if you're not going to the events, you only see what's in front of you. You only see such a small picture of who this company is, of who you're involved with. Um, you don't see the bigger picture. And when you go to an event, you start to see people who are like you. You see people and you relate to them and you realize, "Oh my goodness, she was a stay-at-home, single mom, you know, on government assistance, trying to make ends meet." And look at her today. She's making it. She's doing it. Or, you know, you see someone who was a teacher and you're a teacher and you realize, "She's no different from me." But also too, what you see at the events, you see the heart of our company. You see who Mark and Cindy are. And that's where the business goes from your head to your heart. And once it gets down into your heart, then you believe that you are in the right place with the right people and you can start building with belief. It, the money is not what's gonna drive you as much as realizing that you're part of a bigger picture. And that, yes, if you do the work, the money's gonna be there. But you don't just do it for the money. You start to realize there's a bigger plan in place here, that there's a bigger purpose here. And yes, the money is great and it's, I mean, you should be working to make money. I mean, that's why we do it, right? For the, in the beginning especially, is to make money. But when you get to that event, you start to see that there's more here than you thought. And it really does go from being a head knowledge to a heart knowledge and it'll change everything for you. You'll start building with confidence and conviction that you are in the right company with the right products, at the right time, with the right leadership. And you will start to get that, that, that look in your eye and that voice and that boldness and that belief will come shining through in, in who you're talking to. So, that's why it's important to get to events. Okay? Number five, let's see. What are the benefits of distributors and loyal customers and what's better for your business? Okay, I mean, definitely wanna build with distributors. You need distributors. You also need customers and we're a very, very customer-driven company. And the benefit of both, both of them are gonna create volume. The customers are going to continue to create volume. Distributors are going to bring other distributors and customers. The thing is, don't talk a customer into becoming a distributor unless they are ready to be a distributor. It does you no good to force someone to, for 40 more dollars, to become a distributor when they weren't even thinking about a business opportunity that was not on their radar. And, you know, it, they just aren't the right person. They might get hung up, or excuse me, caught up in the excitement, but when everything settles down, they're back in their, in the former frame of mind that they weren't really looking for a business. And so, it's not anything that they wanna do. So therefore, you wonder where they went. You wonder why they're not doing anything, why they're not on the calls, why they don't go to the events, why they're not posting, why they're not having a party. You know, because they're not who you thought they should have been. They're not a distributor. They should have been a customer. So, some of the best distributors come from being a customer first.
That's how I came.
Huh?
That's how I heard it.
Awesome. You know, because you fell in love with the products. You believed in the products. You knew the products worked. So you had that advantage, that little edge over somebody who doesn't. And so, the best distributors actually come from former, being former customers. And we have distributors that will turn themselves into customers because they realize they should have been a customer probably. And they fall in love with the product and they love the products. Okay? I think that's my husband coming in. He went to take her grand, uh, to meet his mom. So the dogs are barking. I apologize. But, um, so, I mean, both are better for your business. Customers and distributors, both. You need them both. But if, if all you're getting right now is customers, that's okay. You're gonna make 15% off of those customers and distributors will come. I promise you, they will come. The good news is, is you only need a handful of distributors to go all the way to the top of this thing. People who are on fire, all-in and committed to build their own business. It's not something that you need to be building yourself. It's, it is not network marketing for you to put in every single person into the diamond boxes. That does nothing but build you a house of cards. You need to find people. If you're going diamond, you need to have at least two people excited that are wanting to build their own business. One who will go ruby and one who will go emerald in order for you to go diamond. And so, you're looking for two builders. So don't settle for people who are not willing to work their own business. And for me, I, you know, the, the open floodgates of social, social media are not as open as they used to be. Especially on Facebook. I think Instagram is still, um, a pretty good place for you to find customers, for sure. Um, that is still, uh, a viable place to be doing business. I, I believe that. Um, but Facebook is, the algorithms and everything, they've made it very, very hard for us to really actively work and build our business on Facebook. It doesn't mean that you can't. I mean, if that was how you did it before, you could still do it. It's just not gonna happen as fast. But again, you've got to cultivate relationships. You have to be good at learning to, to fall in love with people. So, the days of you just placing people in boxes are, you know, not as, not as, uh, fruitful. Okay? So, you gotta find some people who really, really wanna build a business. And so, to get to diamond, you've gotta have two quality people that are working. Whether you put them, put them in or not is beside the point. Doesn't matter if you brought them in. As long as you got one in one leg and one in another leg, I don't care how far down they are. If you see somebody down there working, then you reach down to that person and you, you introduce yourself and you just make yourself available to help them. Because that will count for you. Alright? To get to double diamond, those two same legs that were working, make sure that one of them gets to emerald and the other one gets to diamond. And then you have three little piddler legs out there just doing 400 in volume. So, two quality legs will get you to a double diamond status. And in order to go triple, you gotta find a third leg. Then Presidential, you need a fourth leg. And Ambassador, you need that fifth leg. So, when you break it down to how that is, you're just looking for five quality people. Five. That's it. What if it took you talking to 5,000 people to find five good ones? Would it be worth it?
Of course.
Right. So that's what you gotta look at. I mean, this is real business. This is a billion-dollar business that you have your hands on and you have to treat it as such. So customers, distributors, they both benefit you. Make sure that you are getting people in who wanna build the business. Everybody else is a customer. Okay? So, where am I here? Get back to my... Alright.
Number seven.
Number seven. How important is it to connect with the family calls, group calls, et cetera? It's a lifeline. It's the lifeline to the blood of your business, is getting on those calls. Now, there are so many calls out there. I'm not one that's gonna sit and listen to every single call that's out there. But you definitely wanna be on the Sunday night call. That's our family call with Mark and Pam and Mike. They go over what's new, what's going on. They set the week to come. They cap the week that was and it's just a good connection. You have to be connected. So that's important. It's also important, if you can, to get on Pam's Show Me The Money call on Monday night. Now, I'm not always on that call, but I always know I can listen to the replay. You know, because, I mean, I shouldn't be just sitting here all the time just on calls. I should be working my business, right? So, if I have nothing to do, then I'll get on the call. But those two calls right there are very important. And, um, you know, I do think that you could be on way too many calls if they're not someone who is, uh, you know, got a best interest in your business. Then, you know, I'd be selective. There's always the replays, you know? But yes, definitely getting on those, getting on any Zooms that are going on, especially anything in the Pioneers group that is going on, you should be plugging into that or getting the replay. Um, it's just important. Again, it's a lifeline. It's a, it's, it's the plug. When you get plugged in, it brings life. So it's very, very important. And then how important is it for you to keep it simple in this business? If you can't keep it simple, it cannot be duplicated. And network marketing is all about duplication. You have to be able to teach someone else to do what you've done. And if you start complicating it by, I mean, some, some people I see that they create these binders and these folders and everything for their new distributors and they print off all this stuff and, "I have never done that. I won't ever do that. I'm gonna follow the steps of success. I'm going to follow the outline that they gave us at conference." Step number one, have them download the Wired app. You know, number two, get them into their back office. Have them order a shirt, you know? Have them brand themselves. Start teaching them how to blitz, you know? It's just systems in place. All that's all good and well. We have different personalities we're working with here. And some people like that and it's okay, but I wouldn't teach it. If it's important for you and you feel like you have to have it, then, you know, then do that if it makes you happy. But to try to get somebody else to duplicate what you're doing, if it's not duplicatable, don't teach it. Only teach what's duplicatable. And that's the steps of success. How to blitz, how to rap, and how to repeat. And just keep following those simple steps. You know, if you're having a rap party or a sip and sample party or whatever, you don't have to have, um, everything with, you know, with a beautiful tablecloth, with lots of, of decorations and boas and things. You don't have to do all that. I mean, if you're doing a, um, expo or something, then yeah, you wanna decorate your table up. But for a party, you just wanna keep it simple. Keep it simple. Because first of all, not only, uh, is it easier for you, but it's also sending a message to the people that come in that say, "Well, all she did was just kinda pull some stuff out of a bag and throw it on the table. I can do that." You know, if you're, if you're making a big production and making it all beautiful and everything, well, that takes time, takes effort. Uh, you have to buy some of those little decorations and stuff and somebody may look at that and go, "I just can't do that. That, I mean, that's not who I am. I don't do things like that." You know, so you gotta remember, when you're not duplicatable, you're not building. You gotta make it simple, gotta make it easy for that new person coming on board to be able to take the ball and run with it. Because the best thing that can happen is they take the ball and run with it. You shouldn't always be, have to be holding on to their, their, you know, their purse strings or whatever. They, you need to be able to teach someone and let them duplicate themselves and teach the others how to do the same thing. So, everything's in your back office. Everything that you need to get started and get going and to do is right there. So, simple, 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 simple. Keep it simple and, um, you're gonna find out that you're gonna be able to build your business a lot better. Okay, what's the number one advice for us as a group? Don't quit. You know, don't quit. The how-to is not as important as the why-to. You gotta decide, "Why are you doing this?" And it has to be very important to you. It has to be something that you just cannot continue to live your life thinking that you will, that you won't get that. You know, if it's something that you have to have. You know, yes, a lot of people get involved for an extra $500 a month. And yes, at that time, they're like, "Yeah, I could really use an extra 500." But, if they've been making it all along without it, without that extra 500 and they would like to have that and they come home, they've worked all day and they come home, they're tired and they've gotta get on a Zoom or they gotta get on a phone call or they gotta go to a meeting. Eh, well, you know, I've been doing okay. I don't know if I really need that extra money as much as I thought I did. Eh, well, you know, I've been doing okay. I don't know if I really need that extra money as much as I thought I did. Okay, so that's going to be easy to give up on. An extra five hundred, you can take it or leave it. Yeah, it'd be nice, but it's not something that just tears you up with thinking that you're not going to get it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So you've got to determine, why would you build this business? And I mean, seriously, if, if five hundred dollars is really why you want to build this business, okay. That's okay. But I hope that you will have, um, you will get a bigger vision down the road. Okay? But you've just got to find the reason why for doing this. And then you have to decide, how bad do I want that? And then go to work. You have to be consistent. You have to do something on a, on a daily basis. Even if you just have one hour a day that you could work this business, work it one hour a day. Make it a priority, you know, until you can buy back some of your time. You know, it's all about trading dollars for time. So find out why you want to do this, get to work and don't quit. That's the biggest advice I have for you. You know, decide now. You're not quitting. Because that's the quickest way to fail is by quitting. You would never know what if it had worked for you and you didn't give it that shot, didn't give it that chance. It's like Mark was talking at conference about being three feet from gold. You know, what if that next person was your catalyst? That got you going again. So it's so important that you figure out why you're doing this. Do something with it and don't quit. Okay?
Excellent.
And number 10, how important is it to be, to be consistent? I just said, you gotta be consistent. You cannot expect that you're going to build a multimillion dollar business on just poking at it with a stick. Every so often, hey, is that thing still alive over there? You know, you've got to do something consistently. And, and the action that you take is what's going to determine your business and how it grows. So if you only pay attention to your business one day a week or one hour a week. It's going to take you a long time to get where you want to go. So, but if, if that's okay with you, then that's okay with me. You know, you gotta be okay with it. But don't blame it works that it didn't work so good for you. You know, I hear people all the time, oh yeah, that thing, I tried it. Yeah, it didn't work. You know, I put all kinds of time and effort into it. Did you really? Did you really? And most of the time, when you dig a little deeper, well, no, they didn't. You know, they gave up on themselves. They didn't give it enough time. So. And is that it? Is that the last question?
That is the last question, Miss Mel.
Alright, well, awesome.
This is amazing. This is great, great message. I have to say that you always pouring onto us is just amazing. And I have to tell you that uh, I am a strong believer of connecting. Um, had I not connected with you or you connected with me when I had my upline, you know, leave me when I had uh, my double diamond or my diamond leader leave me. Um, I think that I would have never been where I was. However, um, I think that if you, it goes back again to your why. I think that if you don't really have a strong why, I don't think I will be here. I mean,
Yeah.
Um, I started honestly, just by me trying to get those rep rewards. That's really why I joined. I never really joined for anything other than that. I really never even thought about the five hundred dollars. I didn't even think about, you know, creating this business, you know? Um, but the fact of the matter is that as I saw it, as I loved the, I loved the products and I became more and more in love with them. And I saw the big picture, you know, and I, I, my wife started to change. And um, I think that the fact that my wife started to change and the fact that you actually reached out to me after like so many different things happening within our, you know, uplines. I think that that really made, made me feel so different and just continued to push and push and push and push and push. So I'm really grateful and I'm thankful for what you're doing now or what you're pouring onto us. And you pour onto me and the fact that you're always available for me and for my team. In my, no matter what or no matter where we are. Uh, that means a lot to me and that totally shows that we are truly one team, one mission, you know, that we are really here to help each other out. And we are really here to, you know, be successful, you know? And I think that that's one of the reasons why I just continue to push myself and help my team. And you know, just, just be there for everybody, you know, just show up, you know, and, and that's very important. Some people will come, some people will go, but that's just the way life is. The right people will be with you, you know, and I'm, I'm a strong believer of that. So, you know, I, I, I'm so thankful for you to be here. Um, Diana, it's a brand new, um, brand new distributor, distributor and um, Diane, I don't know if you have any, any questions for, um, for Melody. Um, but you know, I really, really appreciate everything that you've done and the fact that you're here with us right now.
Well, I'm here.
Anytime you need me.
Absolutely. You need me. So I hope this is helpful and um, you know, that you're able to share this recording and you know, if you want to, if you want to share it on the pioneers page, you can do that as well.
Okay, yes, I'm definitely, everybody that's on the team is actually part of the pioneers team. That team is, the team page is amazing. Everybody learns from everybody, you know? Um, Carissa has been great help always to me. She's been a great assistant for me and uh, I don't know if I will be able to have done things, you know, without her being on the side. And, and again, it goes back to the same thing, you know, she doesn't earn a penny from me, but she still does it because we are truly one team, one mission. So I really, really appreciate that. Um, you know, and I appreciate you and I thank you for everything. Um, and we're going to get through this. We're going to make this happen.
Absolutely. I believe it with everything in me. I really do. And um, I can't wait to celebrate with you. It's going to be such a great celebration.
It will be. It will be definitely.
Okay, awesome.
Melody, um, thank you so much once again for, you know, coming over and hope this is not the last, the first and the last time that we get to meet again. Um, but definitely love to having you uh, here at this soon power hour meeting. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Having us here and keeping us together.
Alright, love you guys.
Love you too.
Alright.
Bye bye.